Hi, yes, my name is... I'm Nina. Yeah, yeah. I was on...
All right, good evening. It's seven o'clock. I had a call this meeting to order at seven o'clock. And may we please have the roll?
Commissioner Van Galen.
Present.
Commissioners Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Black.
Present.
Vice Chair Carter.
Present.
Chair Mente.
Present.
Thank you. We have five commissioners present.
All right, and I'd like to welcome our newest commissioner. Is it Jean or Jeanie?
It's Jean.
Jean Black. Would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any public comment for items not on the agenda?
We do not, Chair.
And I believe we received some correspondence, and we have a motion for receiving filing of correspondence.
Can I have a second, please? Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Jones, second by Vice Chair Carter. Please vote. Thank you. Motion passes with five ayes.
I'm sorry, do we have any consent calendar items?
We do not.
We do not, okay. I didn't think so. All right, so we are going to move on to the public hearings, and I believe City Attorney has one if you'd like to ask.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to take the opportunity, since we have a new member, to remind our commissioners that you oftentimes receive inquiries or requests for meetings from project applicants, interested parties, in advance of your, of the planning commission hearing on a project. If you do meet with members outside of a planning commission, or members of the public outside of a planning commission, you should state on the record at the planning commission hearing that you met with whoever the interested party is. These precautions are necessary to provide developers, members of the public, and interested parties with a fair, disciplined process. I would recommend that you do this after the applicant's presentation, before you start discussing the item. Thank you.
I will do my best to remember that. All right, so we'll call public hearing PH1. I believe we have a staff presentation to begin.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair, Mente, Commissioners, and the committee members here and watching from home. My name is Jose Mendeville, Associate Planner in the current Planning Division, and I am the case manager for this effort. Today, I'm presenting the proposed 10-950 Washington Boulevard Mixed Use Project, and I'll go over the project description, the entitlement process, and the SEQA process. The applicant's presentation will follow. City staff and ESA, the SEQA consultant for the city, are here to answer questions, and we thank the Planning Commission in advance for your input. The mixed-use project has 508 residential units, including 79 low-income units. The project includes a mid-sized commercial space, an open space for the general public on the ground floor, as well as decks, balconies, patios for the project residents. The project is providing affordable units in return for increased density. The density bonus has been approved by the director pursuant to both state density law and our local ordinance. This slide is provided for informational purposes only. The project-based density is 65 dwelling units per acre, or 375 units. Under state density law, the city must grant a 35% density increase, or 133 units, because the developer is providing 21% of the 375 as low income. The city must grant two concessions or incentives, if requested, and unlimited waivers. The applicant requested two concessions addressing height and step-back requirements, and two waivers addressing minimum commercial height and street-fronting setbacks. The project site is zoned mixed-use medium and the surrounding, and is surrounded by commercial uses and elementary school, places of worship, an assisted-living facility, and single and two-family dwellings. The surrounding zonings include mixed-use 1, mixed-use 2, and R2. The project is consistent with the mixed-use medium standards. The two buildings shown here, A and B, include ground-level commercial uses, as well as over 114,000 square feet of open space. That includes 9,250 square feet that is publicly accessible. Subterranean and surface parking contains 685 residential and 30 commercial spaces, including EV parking. Additionally, there are 154 bicycle parking spaces, including both short-term and long-term. At the ground level, the project is designed with a pedestrian focus and community-centric retail. A central parceo and ground floor alcoves along Washington Boulevard that front commercial and residential lobbies provide a walkable landscape path with trees and outdoor seating and dining. As noted, the project is consistent with code. It is anticipated that the ground-floor commercial space will be neighborhood-serving, and there will be at least one restaurant offering outdoor dining. A transportation study did not identify any traffic impacts. Two driveways off Washington Boulevard and three onsite parking areas provide sufficient vehicle and bicycle parking and circulation. These design features were previously discussed, and the applicant will cover project design in more depth during their presentation. These elevations demonstrate the varying vertical planes, color, and material that give the project articulation. Again, the applicant will provide more detail on this topic. Project entitlements include a site plan review and extended construction hours. A site plan review is required to ensure the project is consistent with objective zoning standards. Extended construction hours requires approval by the Planning Commission when processed in conjunction with a site plan review. The applicant requests an extra hour in the morning, Monday through Friday, and two extra hours on Saturday for the seventh month period after demolition. For two of those seven months, they are asking for three extra hours on Sunday for concrete pour. These extended hours will reduce overall construction by two months and minimize traffic during peak hours. Community input was used to refine the project design. The process began in September of 2023, and the first, with the first of three community meetings. The applicant will expand on their outreach, comments received, and how that affected the design of the project. The California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, allows a project to tear off a program and environmental impact report with no further environmental analysis if identified project-specific impacts are within the scope of the program EIR. Under this SEQA provision, project-specific impacts can be mitigated, and a mitigation monitoring program can be adopted without further environmental analysis. A SEQA checklist analyzing project environmental impacts and mitigations are within the scope of the General Plan and Zoning Code Update, EIR. In addition, the project is exempt as an infill housing development pursuant to Public Resources Code Section 210-80.66. Staff has updated the conditions of approval to include conditions required to comply with this section. These include revisions to the Tribal Cultural Resources Condition Number 33, and the addition of a Condition of Approval Number 27, requiring the applicant to comply with Labor Code Section 218.8. In conclusion, staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the project with all requests and environmental determinations as conditioned. This would include adoption of the SEQA checklist, finding the project is SEQA-exempt as an infill housing development, approval of a mitigation monitoring program, approval of a site plan review, and granting of extended construction hours. This concludes staff presentation. We are available for any questions, and thank you.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Let me just say for a moment how I would like to run these public hearings. What I'd like to do is to give members of the commission an opportunity to ask any clarifying questions, and these are really for things we didn't necessarily understand the first time. Then, we will have the applicant speak, member of the public. After that point, every member of the commission will have the opportunity to ask questions of staff, of the applicant, and then make their own comments as we move towards a motion. So, in other words, we will be able to have full comments from the public before we have a lot of substantive comments from members of the commission. When I was first here, I didn't realize that I'd get more chances to ask questions. So, if there are any clarifying questions from Commissioners, please indicate if you have one. If not, then I'll take a motion to open the public hearing.
Sorry, it's not capturing the motions. Can I...
Who moved? All right, so Commissioner Black moved. Was there a second?
I said...
Second by Vice Chair.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Black, second by Vice Chair Carter. Please vote. Thank you. Motion passes with five ayes.
Now, I believe we were going to, before the applicant spoke, indicate whether we have met with the applicant. So, I think we'll just go down the line, starting with Commissioner Black.
I met with the development team for both of the projects.
Thank you.
I also met with the development team for both projects.
I also met with the development team for both projects tonight.
I also met with both.
I have met with neither.
All right, thank you very much. The applicant, time for a presentation, please.
Good evening, Commissioners, Chair Mente, and Honorable Commissioners. First of all, I want to introduce myself, Spencer Callick, with Allen Mackens, and I'm here this evening on behalf of the owner of this property, Hudson Pacific. And I have to say, I'm very excited to be here. This is the culmination of a lot of hard work, and I'd be remiss if I didn't start by thanking staff, who has done a tremendous job getting us to this point. A lot of changes in the code, a lot of moving pieces here. They've been phenomenal, and I think you all know this, we have a phenomenal, phenomenal planning staff. So, this evening, I'm here on behalf of our client Hudson Pacific and the project you just heard about from Jose. Hudson Pacific is the owner and developer of the project. If you're not familiar with Hudson, they are locally based, but have been here for two decades, and develop properties across the country. And we're also likely to have our Culver City-based architects, KFA. You'll hear from Gina shortly, who have been great architects for over 50 years and are based in the Hayden tract. And together, we have put together a team and a project that we're all, as I said, exceptionally excited to share with you. So, this is the property, and I'll try not to repeat what Jose already said, but just briefly, the, what I call a "P-shaped" property that fronts on Washington Boulevard, about five and a half acres, just next to Alenda Street and across from La Bayona Elementary. And as you're probably aware, it's currently developed with two office buildings and surface parking. Many of you are likely familiar, this used to be the home of the NFL Studios, which, when Cronky developed Cronky World, relocated to the stadium area. And even though it is in close proximity to numerous neighborhood amenities, it frankly has been, you know, underutilized for many years. And so, especially when the city, and many of you on this committee, went through the General Plan Update and the Land Use Element Update, and recognized that sites like this are prime for redevelopment and for more housing in great mixed-use communities, Hudson took a close look at this and said, "You know what? This is something that makes sense for us, and we'd like to do something that's in keeping with what the community wants to see." So, briefly, we talked about the General Plan Update and Land Use Element. This property is a prime candidate for redevelopment. Under City's General Plan and Zoning Code, the property's land use destination and zoning is mixed-use medium, which allows for mixed-use residential projects, like the one before you this evening, and permits a density at a base of 65 dwellings per acre with additional density through a density bonus. Now, before I get too far ahead of us, I want to talk a bit about community engagement, because as somebody who used to live in Culver City and is doing many projects in Culver City, this community is very vibrant, has a lot of opinions, and it's something that we often and early sought out as a part of this project. In addition to meeting with all of you, or many of you, we wanted to talk to our neighbors, because Hudson Pacific has owned this property for many years, and frankly knows our neighbors well. And so, between myself, and Chris, and Eric on our team, we went out, we had not only the community meetings that were required, but also many, many one-on-one sit-downs via Zoom, in person over coffee. And frankly, I think it led to a better project. And so, I want to talk to you a bit about some of the things that we did. I should also note briefly that we also had a dedicated website. Everyone's got a website for everything now, we did as well, and we received feedback through our website. So, what did we hear? What we heard, and frankly, how we've evolved our project, is that we wanted, they wanted, the community wanted to see generous setbacks, ample landscape screening, and recessed balconies from certain portions of the project. We also removed pedestrian access from Trollope Avenue and Milton Avenue as a neighbor's request, although emergency access will still be allowed on those streets. And we made sure to activate Washington Boulevard's frontage and incorporate bicycle amenities. And with that in mind, I'm going to hand it over to our amazing architect Gina Welch to walk you through our design.
Thank you. Thank you, Spencer. That is way too high for me. Good evening. It's great to be here tonight. Thank you, Gina Welch with KFA Architecture. Let's see. Okay, I, I'll start with some of the numbers I know. This was, some of these were already mentioned. But again, the project does have 508 total units. 79 of those units will be reserved for low-income households. There's 14,000 square feet of neighborhood-serving commercial uses, and the project incorporates more than 700 parking spaces with 71 EV charging stalls. Let's go to the next site. The project consists of two separate five-story buildings, which are the light gray, the solid light gray hatch on the site. Planet's kind of hard to read from a distance, but these two buildings are connected by one level of subterranean parking. The buildings are separated by a landscaped pedestrian parceo that does span the length of the site, and public green spaces have been added along Washington Boulevard. The project also contains four private courtyards on the second level, a pocket park at the rear of the site, and a rooftop deck facing Washington Boulevard. Access to the parking garage occurs in two locations. One is off of the fire lane that's on the northeastern side of the site, and the other is off of the fire lane on the southwestern portion of the site. The fire lane also does wrap around the southern side of the site, which does allow, providing a 36-foot building setback from the property line. In addition, there will be a 20-foot high hedge planted all along that south property line adjacent to the single-family homes to allow some privacy there. Okay, this rendering illustrates the project as you look more south toward, along Washington Boulevard. The design concept highlights strategic pops of color, and the facades are punctuated with recessed balconies. The massing along Washington is intentionally varied to create a more pedestrian-friendly streetscape. And the retail spaces that you see at the lowest level here are designed to have their own expression with distinct materials and characteristics to give each tenant its own character and expression through signage, canopies, and architecture. As we mentioned, the project does include more than 14,000 square feet of community-serving commercial spaces, which will contribute to activating Washington Boulevard when providing conveniences for the community. This rendering illustrates a 9,000-square-foot public park, which is right at the start of that landscaped parceo that goes through the site. This will have integrated seating, lush landscaping, and lots of welcoming gathering spaces for the public. And the project also will include installation of a new traffic light at Washington at the intersection of Prospect Avenue. So, this will improve traffic flow and provide a safe crossing for students traveling to La Bayona Elementary School across the street, and for neighbors visiting the new commercial spaces at the property. With that, I will turn it back to Spencer.
Thanks, Gina. I have to say, I love this rendering and this picture so much, because I used to live just on the other side of Linda, and I know this neighborhood really well, because I used to walk my dog at 6:00 a.m. every morning down in front of this property. And I'm going to be honest, sorry, Chris, it's a little sad there today. There's really no landscaping in order to walk. There's nothing really going on there. And to be able to have this come with this project and have the connectivity and activation, and new retail stores, and new grass area, and new places to sit and have a cup of coffee, I think is something that Washington, besides Millcross, pretty much is lacking at the moment. And so, we're, I'm very excited personally about this. So, briefly, you saw earlier Jose mentioned the request approvals. Our density bonus approval has already been approved at a staff level, but we are asking for a site plan review, the extended hours of construction, and certification of the SEQA documentation for this project as well. And so, that is the end of our presentation for now. I'm sure you may have questions. Happy to take those now, or to wait until later.
So, I'm going to ask if members of the commission have clarifying questions right now. If not, we'll go to public comment, but please, Gina and Spencer, stick around. We'll have questions for you afterward.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, well, thank you. We will have more questions for you afterward, but let's call the, are there any members of the public who wish to speak? I'm signed up.
We have seven members of the public that signed up to speak.
Okay, the usual three minutes each, then.
I will call out the first five, so you are aware who's coming up. First speaker is Edward Wolkowitz, Omar Contreras, Rebecca Godbe, John Kahn, and Jeff Cooper. Our first speaker is...
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ed Wolkowitz, and I am a 47-year resident of Culver City. I have to say at the outset that it's been a while since I've been to a planning commission meeting. Actually, the last one I attended was 1994, when I retired from the commission. But I'm here this evening, not as a resident, but as the interim CEO of the Culver City Chamber of Commerce. The Board of the Chamber was given an extensive presentation of this project and voted overwhelmingly to recommend its approval to the city. We believe that housing being as hot a topic as it is today, this is, to my memory, one of the largest housing projects to come before the city in many years. And we think that this will certainly add to the, our requirements under the housing element. It's also nice to see that there are 79 low-income units, and that the city isn't required to pay millions in order to have them built. All in all, we believe that this project should be approved as presented, and if you have any questions of me, which I sincerely doubt, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Omar Contreras.
Good evening. My name is Omar Contreras. I'm a very involved parent at La Bayona Elementary School with a child with special needs. He's a current third grader, so I have a vested interest in what's going on in the community here. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to voice a few concerns. As I'm coming into more information tonight, I'm a little late to the party, it seems, for some community involvement, but there's definitely a cohort of parents who would like to express a few concerns and make up a certain proposal. The traffic and safety implications are a major concern to the parents at the La Bayona Elementary School community. We, of course, are worried about the welfare of the children, but also the general community. As you might imagine, the surrounding neighborhood is full of students and families. The development of this property will significantly increase traffic congestion in an area that is already gridlocked during high-traffic areas in the morning. School times drop off in the afternoon, pickup as well. What we'd like to know is what safety measures were, will be implemented in terms of the traffic measures, and also, while construction is being implemented, what other increased patrols and/or crosswalk bus safety will be implemented during what I'm assuming is a very extensive construction period. My child is only third grade. He probably will not even see the end of this project before moving on to middle school, but I think a future generations of students and families. Currently, to my knowledge, La Bayona Elementary School is the only CCUSD school site that does not have designated public access for disabled parking for visitors. The staff parking lot for the school has insufficient spaces for all school personnel to be accommodated themselves, let alone visitors on campus. This has been a problem for a very long This has been a problem for a very long time, as is the school district and city are both out of legal compliance with ADA state and federal regulations. And we're hoping that the commission takes this into consideration. And thereto brings me to the proposal, if it's not too late in this juncture, to be recommended. The development of this mixed-use project on Washington Boulevard brings to the school community and the city alike a very unique and wonderful opportunity for a much-needed parking partnership and reform. We, as concerned community members, are optimistic that an allotment of parking spaces, quantity hopefully to be determined, can be negotiated and set aside for CCUSD. This will bring the city and the district into compliance with ADA and solve a greater challenge of parking for personnel and the community for years to come. It's a wonderful opportunity. Special note, I have a fostered, I fostered a wonderful working relationship over the past several years with Andrew Maximus and the Mobility and Traffic Engineering Division, and with CCPD Parking Enforcement over the three years, and I welcome their input and value their knowledge as well in the matter. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rebecca Godby.
Your time has expired. Thank you. But I haven't started yet.
Good evening, Board Members, Community. My name is Dr. Becky Godby, and I am the proud principal of La Bayona Elementary School, located directly across the street from the proposed development. This is my sixth year as the principal at La Bayona and my 17th year serving at the school community. One of the greatest challenges our school faces every single day is parking. We have over 100 staff members, but only 40 of them actually get parking spots on campus. Parents and visitors have even, have it even worse. There's just about four-ish designated spots in front of the school for them. While there is street parking, it is already shared with businesses, apartments, duplexes, single-family homes. Add to that more than 400 families arriving and leaving twice a day, plus all the street parking rules, and you can understand why our families describe parking at La Bayona as a nightmare. I want to be transparent, I have not reviewed the hundreds of pages and planning documents, and I respect the expertise that's been happening behind the scenes, but my priority has been opening this school this year. But I just want to make one clear request. As you finalize your plans, I strongly encourage you to prioritize additional underground parking. Not only would this make the development more attractive to future residents, many of whom will be expecting reliable parking, but it'd also bring more customers to your retail spaces. Most importantly, it could provide a lasting benefit to the broader Washington Boulevard community, including our school. Similar to Omar, I envision a joint-use partnership where the parking is available for community use, similar to where I parked just today for this. I believe that if it's, if this is not considered, this project risks worsening an already dire situation and creating headaches for our entire community. La Bayona is part of a collaborative, community-minded district. Together, we, we could turn this development into a win-win, one that not only adds housing and retail and a great new place for me to maybe get lunch or coffee, but also helps solve a parking problem that has plagued our area for over 20 years. So my request tonight is simple. Please prioritize adding additional underground parking to your development. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Kahn.
Chair Commissioners, I'm John Cohen. I'm the immediate past president of the Exchange Club of Culver City. I'm certain that some of you have heard of us. I cannot make any comments about the merits of this particular project, but I can say something about Hudson Pacific and the kind of neighbor they have been in supporting the kinds of work that we do in the community. For the past two years, they have, free of charge, allowed us to use their sound stages at the NFL Network for our Get Out the Funk event, which is raise money for backpacks for kids, and has been very, very significant. If that's an example of the kind of neighbor, neighborly attitude that they have, we certainly think that they will be a real beneficiary and benefit this community in a, in a really important way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jeff Cooper.
Chair Commissioners, my name is Jeff Cooper. I'm speaking as a member of the Culver City Exchange Club and echoing many of the same thoughts that Mr. Kahn just echoed prior. The Exchange Club is a service club that gives its money to really those in need. Two years ago, we did a complete remodel of the library at La Bayona School. Several years ago, three, really three years ago, I approached Chris from Hudson Pacific through Eric Schapsis and told him an idea of raising money. We're looking to raise money for the Backpacks for Kids program that provides weekend large backpacks for kids that are food insecure and their families. So every Friday, they, these kids originally were getting a backpack. Now they get a large box of food that pretty much gives their nutrition to their, not only them, but their families every Friday and gets them through Monday. And when I told Chris about this from Hudson Pacific and the idea, they got right behind it and really offered to do whatever they can assist to help us out, and that was really letting us produce an event the last two years on the existing soundstage. So as John said, they've been a great community member, and I look forward to them also, you know, being a future community member, not only with this development, but also participating to help those most in need. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mark Kakner.
Mark Kakner, I'm a resident of Culver City for the last 10 years. First time I've ever been to an event like this. I saw something on, I think, Facebook about the building coming up and thought this was an opportunity to speak maybe early in the process. I realize I'm way too late, so I'll just share my thoughts. I live just off of Alinda. I have a fifth grader and a second grader that go to La Bayona. I'm so glad that our principal came to speak about the project. I'm far more pessimistic and concerned about the project than anyone that's spoken so far. I'll just share, I heard that someone say that, that this is what the community wants, and I don't know who they're speaking on behalf of, but it's not what this community wants. There's, there's barely one parking spot per, per unit, so there's not going to be enough parking. It's going to like ruin the, the ability to get my kids to school and back and pick them up. There's already zero parking, so we risk getting a parking ticket every time we're picking our kids up from school if we don't have time to, to park three blocks away and walk. So there's just not enough parking. There's not enough green space. The building's way too tall. There's nothing that's five stories around for, for quite a while. So it's going to be an eyesore, and, and I think giving a concession to make it taller was a mistake. And if there's still an opportunity to restrict the height of this building, you have my, my full support. I heard someone from the Chamber of Commerce say that they supported it. I, I don't know enough about the Chamber of Commerce, but that's sad to me. I think we should all be much more skeptical about buildings like this going into our neighborhoods that affect, especially right across the street from an elementary school, and that concerns me absolutely the most. We do walk our kids to school every single day. We have a cross, crossing guard, but I've got to say, it's dangerous to cross the street to get to school, even with a crossing guard, and I'm very concerned that this is going to make it much more dangerous. I'm, I'm sad to hear someone else that was proud that this is the largest housing project going into Culver City in, in a long time. To me, that's a, that's a tragedy. We don't need the largest housing project going in Culver City, going in directly across the street from my kid's elementary school. To the extent there's any opportunity, I ask you, please consider, add more parking, make more green space, limit the height of this building, support the elementary school that's across the street from, from the, the planning site, and I'll see you the rest of my time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Andrew Rollman.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, and Honorable Commissioners. It's interesting to hear Mr. Wolkowitz come. This is my first meeting, not being on the commission, but it's my, like I just rolled off, so. There's a lot of things to say about this, and I'm talking to my neighbor back there, and I live on Huron right there, and now that I'm not on the commission, I can talk about it with my neighbors in the community and how we feel about it. We have a really tight neighborhood, and, you know, we're at home on Huron is our tagline on a WhatsApp group that we all are on, and there's been a lot of discussion about this. The biggest, I know that by right and by dobe, we're going to have what we have, right? So the concerns are, you know, the height of the flag piece that's between two backyards of residential area. I know that it's going to end up five stories, and views into those drive, views from the building into those backyards on either side is a big concern for everybody in the neighborhood, right? The extended construction hours is also a big concern. Like, I realize that it gets the project done, but it saves the developer a lot of money, and that's why they want it. It doesn't necessarily help the backyards that butt up against the project when they're working at 7:00 AM every day and on the weekends. So I think that that's, that's a big concern. Maybe we can talk about the extended hours not being on the flag piece that's in between backyards and two residential parcels. I am happy to see that we're doing this not in just Fox Hills. I know we're going to talk about Fox Hills project in a minute, but the voices there have always been, why are we getting all the housing here? But we're getting some here, right in another part of the, part of the community. Ever since I saw this at La Bayona for one of the community meetings when I went to, and the discussion of closing off access to Charles, I've been disappointed at that move. I realize there's some voices of community members right there, but I think it's a lost opportunity to let the community have access to that passeo instead of having to walk out and walk your family out onto Washington Boulevard and into that passeo if you're worried about your family, your kids. The left turn that goes from Washington Boulevard West is a huge concern. Right now, there's a median right there, so you'd have like, you'd be in traffic lanes on Washington and have to like scoot out of the median into a left-turn center lane with lots of traffic behind you honking and people in the street, and that's a huge safety concern. So look at that left turn in there.
Thank you. That is the end of our speakers.
So now what I'd like to do is to ask Commissioners, I'm going to go one at a time, to ask Commissioners to have any questions for, for staff or for the applicant, if the applicant's willing to speak, and if they have any comments they wish to make. And of course, we may come back around again if there's a desire to. So starting with Commissioner Black.
I don't have any questions. I had asked them when I met with the developer, and at this time, I don't have any comments.
Commissioner, I'm going.
The only concern I have is the access at the rear to Charles Avenue and Milton Avenue. I understand that the neighbors don't want it, but how was that determined? And is it possible in the future to possibly restore it, just to add connectivity to the surrounding area?
Thanks, Spencer.
I'm, I'm happy to answer that question. Just procedurally, do you want me to, normally we've done like a short rebuttal to some, or the, or response to some of the questions or comments that were made. Do you want me to kind of go through that all, or I'm happy to answer his question directly and then go into that?
How about this? Why don't you answer his question directly?
Sure.
But then after that, if you have additional things you'd like to add?
Sure.
As the applicant, I think we'd appreciate it greatly.
Of course. Commissioner, so when we first proposed this project, we did have a pedestrian access through Charles Street. I think it's frankly makes the most sense from a, from a pedestrian perspective and also from an urban planning perspective. Your staff can speak to that. We did receive some very specific, very pointed feedback from a number of neighbors along Charles, asking us vociferously not to do that. So we agreed not to do that, which is why you see that there's not that access, to be respectful to our neighbors.
Thank you.
Yeah. So if I, if I might just briefly kind of go through, because there are a number of things I'm sure you'll have questions about, but I wanted to address a couple of them. I want to start with the, the school and appreciate Mr. Contreras coming out and Dr. Becky. I really appreciate them coming out, especially on a school night, especially I know school just went back. Let's talk about parking for a second. Parking, as you all know, as a commission, is a hot topic in Culver City and every city. As you know, there's no parking requirement for a project like this, and there are some, perhaps on those commissions, on the community, some on the city council, who would like to see no parking for any of these new projects. At the same time, as you heard, we have neighbors who are very concerned about parking, and I think rightly so. And as I mentioned, I used to live two blocks away, and I would watch every day people, you know, double park to go to drop their kids off at school. But also, you know, because a lot of those buildings, those older buildings along Washington have no parking, a lot of the tenants, but also their employees and their people who are visiting them, just park like in studio states or on Charles or on Alinda and walk over in the community. And so when we designed this project, we said we need to park this project so that there is no parking on side streets. There is no parking in the community streets, that all parking will be self-contained. And so unlike some of the things that we heard from some of the community members, we're actually parking this at 1.4 parking spaces per bedroom. We also include 30 commercial parking spaces for the retail at the ground floor. So there really should be frankly way more parking than, well, more than adequate parking for this project, but also this project has something that all of their surrounding properties don't have, which is it has parking, as opposed to, you know, I go to Shikibu or, you know, any of the other Lonzo's or whoever, and there is no parking there. So we feel as though, and we've, we've done studies about making sure that there's sufficient parking at the property. In terms of trying to solve some of the schools' challenges with parking, I'm not sure that this project can solve those problems per se, but I will say is two things. One, we're about, we're paying about a million and a half dollars in mobility fees to the city as part of this project. We, as the developer, can't determine where that money goes. The money is determined by the city council. We absolutely be supportive of that money going back into the community and back into these neighborhoods so that perhaps it could pay for additional ADA parking. And in addition, to help the schools, as with all new development projects, as many of you are probably aware, we play what are known as Quimby fees, which are fees or school fees, often described as a school fees, where those dollars go directly to the school district for them to determine how best to use it. We don't get to decide as the developer, but that's significant dollars to the school district to decide where that goes, and by all means, I think that would be great if it, it sounds like there's a parking challenge, especially for ADA students and for, that, that makes a lot of sense for that money to go there. Couple other items that we heard, one was about just safety during construction. That's something that I share a concern about. It's frankly part of the reason why we asked for the extended construction hours. That may sound a little bit bizarre, but let me explain. We'd liked there to be construction to start earlier so that our construction workers can show up earlier before the rush of traffic for school and people going to work and people dropping off their kids or picking them up. And so if we were able to start earlier, those, our, our construction workers can get off the streets faster. Unlike what I heard, it's actually not cheaper for us to do that. It's more expensive to get people to work off hours, not normal hours, but we are willing to do that to actually allow for that construction to be safer. And there will be protected pedestrian access along the frontage of Washington on, in both sides during construction. We can get into access in a second, but I do, I know that Commissioner Jones had a question earlier in the day about access, and I can bring that up in a second. I'll come back to that. A couple other items that I heard, one is the building is way too tall. The project, the existing height limit for this project is 56 feet. We, unlike a number of projects, we could have frankly gone up to 70, 80 feet. We, unlike a number of projects, we could have frankly gone up to 70, 80 feet with NC bonus, we only asked for an additional five feet above the city's height limit, so we do feel that it's in keeping with the community and the height in the area. There's an existing 50-foot essentially tall building there now, and so this is frankly, only about another five or six feet, or sorry, apologies, about another 11 feet taller. It's something that we also looked at very closely, and we can, we have a couple diagrams we can show in a second. I don't know, maybe if you can put up the, the slides again, that look at the adjacency to our neighbors, because that's something that we took very seriously. Let me, so a couple of things that I wanted to point out, in terms of adjacency to our neighbors, as you've heard that. The required setback along the, what I'll call the backside of our property, the kind of that fire lane that wraps around here and up here, is 20 feet. That's what's required by the city. In listening to our neighbors, we extended that to, in some places, up to 36 feet of a setback. We also, in response to our neighbors and a lot of discussions with them, increased the mature landscaping along that solid masonry wall to buffer further. A lot of those trees will go up to about 20 feet at full maturity, and we set back, we inset our balconies on the upper levels to, because there was concerns that people would be out on the balconies kind of looking down. Usually, I don't know the last time you were on a balcony, I don't go on a balcony and look down, afraid of heights, but usually people are looking out. But either still, we, we still inset or recessed those balconies further as well. I think there was one more comment.
If I could interrupt you briefly.
Sure, please.
This particular diagram doesn't seem to show recessed balconies. Is that a ground level one?
Let me, can we go back to the?
That was the ground floor. They're not recessed.
They're not recessed on the ground floor, because there's a wall there. People, no one's going to see anything. Can we go back? There we go. So on this diagram, this is an example, a little confusing, but this is our, the south facade and west facade. What this is showing you is the inset, I don't know where the pointer goes, here we go. That's the setback from existing homes along Charles. So on the first floor, they are not inset, they're still normal balconies, but that's because you've got a 20-foot wall here. And then on the upper levels here, as you can see, they're inset with the wall of the And again, that was something that we, we had a closer setback, and we purposefully made it more generous and inset those balconies to respond directly to specific conversations that we've been having and things that we heard at the community meeting. And then I wanted to pause briefly on this slide, because I know Commissioner Jones had a question, try and be a little proactive for you here. So this is something that was not in your original slides. We actually put a couple, like the traffic study and our plans together, and what I wanted to show on this slide is a couple of things. First of all, there is a new parking, sorry, where's my pointer here? I'm just thinking about it. Well, anyways, I'll go over, oh, I guess I can't go over there, you won't hear me. The green hatch represents new pedestrian walkways, new crosswalks that will be installed, and a new parking, or a new traffic light that will be installed at the intersection of Prospect Avenue and Washington Boulevard. That is new as part of this project. That will allow for a signalized intersection and create, increase pedestrian safety. The existing orange hash marks are the existing pedestrian walkways at both corners, and then we're also showing the directional traffic, how cars would come in and come out. So hopefully that clarifies your question, Commissioner Jones, about ingress and egress. I think I hit all the things I heard, but I'm sure you'll have some additional questions. Please feel free to lob them my way.
Well, thank you, and forgive me for starting before we did the rebuttal bit.
Oh, that's okay.
We are ready for Commissioner Jones.
Thanks. I, I have a lot. First of all, I thank you to the public commenters who are here in person and who emailed in. There were some commenters that submitted their comments that way, too. Start with trees. I, I noticed all the palm trees, which I feel like I read a lot of anti-palm tree propaganda. I don't know if anyone else does, but I saw, I saw in the city's Urban Forest Master Plan, which has three, three places of priority, and one of them is Washington Boulevard, and specifically they want, it wants to add shade trees to the palms along Washington to improve the corridors' walkability, strengthening pedestrian connections throughout the city, encouraging foot traffic to many shops and destinations along the Boulevard. The selected species of shade tree will have a canopy high enough that the trees will not block signs or storefronts. Was this considered, this kind of for applicant, kind of for staff as well?
Yes, so a couple of different things. One is, we will be removing two, there's street trees, right? Those are the palm trees you're seeing. We don't control those. We will need to remove at least two of them as part of putting in that new driveway and the traffic signal. So you're getting rid of two, for sure. And then in terms of the trees that are in the public paseo and throughout, you can see on our landscape plans sheet L801, that we have a diverse set of trees and shrubs and plants. That final palette is subject to change. It would be possible to change out some of those palm trees for other species such as California sycamores, Brisbane box, or Chinese flame trees. So that's something that we're certainly open to on our property, since that's what we have control over.
I'm not specifically concerned with, I guess, the ones on, I was, maybe when we talked before, I was concerned about the ones on the, on the property, but then I, after I read this master plan, they actually like the ones, and probably you know that and you chose that one, the kind that you're going to have on the paseo, is supported by the city's master plan. But I guess, I, other, other projects I've seen have taken the opportunity to introduce shade to the sidewalk, even when it's not, you know, it's on the city sidewalk. Like, what, how does that happen, and why can't that happen here? Or is that the, is it, is it just the applicant's choice, or it's not the applicant's choice?
So the Public Works Department, as part of the internal review, they did not comment on that. They, they, they were okay with the, with the existing palm trees.
Okay.
They didn't, they did not require a specific condition of planting additional shade trees to augment the existing street trees.
I think part of it also candidly is, no one likes to kill trees, right? So we're not, if we don't have to, we want to leave them alone, if possible.
So the, I was, I was surprised when I read the, the master plan, actually. They, they say to add, to add shade trees to what's there. It doesn't say rip out the palm trees. I kind of expected it to, but yeah, and I'm not concerned with ripping them out so much as getting shade along that stretch of Washington.
Sure. Certainly understand the concern. At the moment, we're only proposing to remove two of them, and again, that'll be for the ingress and egress, but we are planning to add more trees and different types of trees to the public paseo area, where I think is the kind of place where people are going to sit and have a cup of coffee and bagel, meet their friend, have, you know, read a book kind of thing.
Okay, next is, I guess, the CCUSD parking proposal, I guess. I, we don't really have a way to, I don't know, make you do that, but I, I think it's interesting, and I guess, I guess what I was specifically thinking was, and after I heard the comments, was there's going to be a long period where, okay, maybe, hopefully not too long, there's going to be a period where a lot of those parking spaces are going to be vacant, and it wouldn't hurt you to allow teachers to park there during that time. Now, I know, we're not a part of that, really. I'm just kind of saying that as, as a, as a comment, as a La Biona parent. Let's see. I, I also am curious, actually, I didn't hear you respond to this specifically, that, is it, is it possible to open Charles Street in the future? Is that, is it, is it, it could be built in such a way that would just be totally impossible, or is that something that could be changed at some point?
So it is possible. I mean, we are putting a gate in there for purposes of Fire Life Safety Access, the Fire Department, God forbid, had to come down there. We, you know, have made a commitment as a community that we wouldn't open it, but technically it is possible if that were the direction.
After this, if we, if we approve it as it is, you would need to come to the city to do it. Is that right?
I don't think so. I mean, say this, like, nice away possible. It's possible that in the future, people will come there and say, "Well, gosh, we really want to be able to walk straight in there. We don't have to go all the way around and walk down Alenda and come back around." And that is feasible, but that is not what our current plan is.
I see. Anything to add, staff?
If I can address your, your point, Commissioner Jones, I think you would have to put a covenant on the project that would have to be recorded in order to prove, to stop them from accessing, and then later the covenant would have to be released to grant that again.
But, but that's, but that's not part of what we're.
It's not, that's not before, it's a, the, the current plan's before you, it's a voluntary concession by the property owner.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah.
During the first community meeting, when they proposed a, a access for Charles Street residents through the paseo to Washington Boulevard, there was strong opposition from the community, and that's why they decided to not touch it. Right now, it's, it's just a straight wall right now. If you, if you drive at the end of Charles, it's, it's just a wall.
And I think, I think if there's a desire by the Commission to allow it to potentially happen in the future, I think you can certainly express that, and we certainly are hearing you, and I think community members are here and are listening, you know, maybe it's something that we could be done in the future, but as of right now, we're trying our best to be good neighbors and listen to the, the will of our, our neighbors.
Yeah. My, I, it sounds like maybe I'm on the same page, but my concern is like, I don't want to, tonight, foreclose it from ever happening.
Agreed.
Sorry, I'm confused. Is it a gate, or is it a wall?
There's a gate, so that the Fire Department is able to access the property.
The existing condition is a wall, but it would be, it would be a gate with construction.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, I want to talk about, this, this is very, is very clarifying, but it, it raises some questions, I think. So the, the new traffic signal icon there, is that, where, which, is it facing all directions? I mean, like, is, does, is everybody who's coming to that intersection seeing a signal? So like, people leaving the driveway?
Correct. Everybody is seeing it, all directions.
Okay. And I, a question for staff about how, I don't know, are all the details of this figured out? I'm thinking of stuff like, no right turn on red, stuff that could make it safer, because I'm, I'm very concerned about, about safety, all the, all the people who walk, who walk here, especially the school.
Andrew Maximus, the Mobility and Traffic Engineer Manager, is, I believe he's on the line, if he wants to speak to this, but all of this has been approved through the Public Works Department.
Okay. And so stuff like?
Yeah, thank you. This is Andrew. So those details will be worked out when applicant submits their off-site plans, and we take a look at the geometries and all of the details that go into the traffic signal design. Right turn on red would certainly be one of the considerations, but we'll, we'll work out all those details at that point.
And, and would the safe routes to schools, like walk-in rollers, folks be included? Could they be included in that process?
Yeah, I mean, Jim, who is essentially a contract worker for the city in our Safe Frost School program, will be able to provide feedback, and other, other improvements and features such as leading pedestrian interval will probably be one of the standard things that go in at the, at the traffic signal. Obviously, a yellow painted crosswalk on both sides. But again, all the finer details will come through and be looked at, of course, with that, through that lens.
And I, I appreciate the, the concern. We share the concern. You know, right now, that's a existing driveway where at peak times, 500 cars a day were going in and out of there, and so when we, when our traffic engineer was working with Andrew and the city family, Andrew raised, "Hey, we really like to see a traffic light there." We didn't really, it was not absolutely necessary, but we said, "You know what? We agree. We need to do this, so that it can be safer where across the street from the school. God willing, a lot of the people who live in this community will actually be students," and so we have agreed to install that traffic light and make it safer.
Okay. That, when you're exiting, so this, I presume this wouldn't be part of the conversation with Public Works, but when you're exiting, are there safety measures that could be implemented? I don't know, a speed bump, a raised something that, or, or maybe even a barrier that goes up that prevents cars from not stopping? You know, something that slows down cars or prevents cars from, from stopping? Has, has that been discussed?
It's something we've given thought to. You know, again, we're still at entitlement level plans, we haven't fully put together construction drawings, but I do think that there's possibility to, to look at that in more detail as we move forward.
Okay. I'm thinking about that, I mean, for, for both driveways, I think. I was mostly concerned about the, the traffic light at first, but then I was also looking at the other driveway. And in particular, if, if you're, I think you are familiar, very familiar with this area, but.
Yes.
The, almost, almost the entire 100 feet from Alenda, so if you go down from Alenda on the right side of this, of Washington on this picture, almost all of it is a curb cut from, you know, the applicant's other property that's on the corner. It's this big driveway that has a gate, which is nice, and it, anyway, there's that. And then now, we're going to have even more, so almost the entire 100 feet from that crosswalk is going to be a curb cut. And, and I'll, and, you know, hundreds of kids walk that every day, and the, let's see, I'm, I'm concerned about that driveway more generally, and so I think like the, those kinds of measures that can slow cars that are coming out of there is, are extremely important there, maybe even more important than where there's a signal. And I'm also concerned, like Mr. Roman is, about the, the left turns from going west on Washington, so like, I actually don't know which one he was talking about, but I was concerned about the one at the, the Easternmost Crosswalk, which is at the top of this picture, or the Easternmost Drive, which is the top of this picture, that, and I looked up the, the city's local, let's see, where's that? Roadway Safety Plan describing raised medians prohibit left turns into and out of driveways that may be located too close to the functional area of the intersection. And I was thinking the exact same thing about extending that median, and then, and then I, then I saw in the transportation plan that, well, we're hoping that people would turn that way, which, which is, concerns me. Would you consider not allowing that, right there?
It's something we can look at. Part of frankly, one of the ways to frankly make it safer is to take more cars off the street quicker, so that there are less cars traveling, so if they had to go down fast, you know, if they had to go down to the light and turn, there are also concerns about that, I think, in terms of safety. So it's definitely something we can look at and work with Public Works and Andrew and his team as well, as we move forward.
Because I'm, I'm thinking about like, you know, kids who are not going to be looking, or distracted parents, who are not going to be looking, expecting a car to be turning. I think, I'm, I'm thinking like, especially at the beginning of people actually living here, maybe, maybe eventually, you know, we'll just be used to it, but it, it, I think it is, it is scary from the, you know, our, our kids walk here, so I'm, I'm really, I'm really concerned about it. And I appreciate your, that you also sound concerned about it, so hopefully that's.
I have, I have school-aged kids.
No, totally, yeah.
My daughter started first grade this week. I get it. I understand.
I think I had, I think that was it for driveways. Okay. Construction plan. The construction hours, would you, would you consider, again, we, we heard this in public comment, would you consider not having the early hour for the, the piece that, you know, is just like jutting out into, I don't know if that's possible, I presume you're not working on the entire site at once, but like, when you're, when you have work that's scheduled in that like little finger that goes out, like that part wouldn't happen between 7:00 and 8:00 AM? Is that something that could be done?
Yeah, so to be clear, that little finger, I mean, could argue about where the finger actually ends, but the kind of point of that finger actually is just a park. There's nothing, no, no physical structure being built there. In terms of the, the other areas, I mean, it's something that we consider, look, candidly, we want to build this thing as fast as we can to provide much-needed housing and 79 units of affordable housing to the city as quick as we can. We're also good neighbors, as you've heard from, you know, the former mayor and many others in this community, and we take that seriously and have been neighbors with the folks on Charles and Milton for many, many years, and so it's something we can consider, but we would like to have the flexibility to be able to have this. consider, but we would like to have the flexibility to be able to have the construction hours. It doesn't mean that hammers are swinging necessarily at 7:00 a.m., but it allows us flexibility to start mobilizing folks, especially to get them off of the street, like we talked about, before school peak hours occur.
So that's interesting, but I guess, is it, I guess, what I'm wondering is, is it workable? Is that like something that, if, let's say, it ended up being a requirement, is that something that could be done? This part of the site, work doesn't happen there?
It would make it more expensive, and it would take longer to build.
Okay. And then I want to ask about the, you said protected pedestrian access on both sides of Washington during construction?
That's correct.
Because I don't think that's what's in the construction plan.
And the construction management plan, it does say that there will be, well, nothing's happening on the, what I'll call the La Biona side of the street. On our side, on the Washington side of our street, there will be protected pedestrian bicycle access. There'll be K-rails and temporary construction fencing.
Because it says, it is proposed to close the sidewalk parking lane adjoining the site on Washington Boulevard for the duration of the project, and then the detour is to cross to the other side of Washington, not that there's a protected pathway.
The existing sidewalk, I think you may have the old version, and I apologize, it looks like staff, or we may have got the old version. At one point, staff had asked us to agree to not close the sidewalk, and we have agreed not to close the sidewalk. There'll be a kind of temporary, the existing sidewalk that's there will be closed, but there'll be a temporary sidewalk pedestrian access for, that'll have, you know, K-rails protecting us from pedestrian or from vehicular traffic.
And so when we're approving this, because that, the attachment to the, that's not what the attachment to the...
That's correct. I think you have an old version attached here. I apologize.
Can we approve the revised version, having not seen it?
You do. You, we sent, I can pull up the email.
There's a condition addressing the construction management plan. I'm looking for it right now.
Okay, thanks.
I should also note that the construction management plan is a draft. It's something that we provided in connection with this project. When we actually go get our building permits and start construction, the city will approve a final plan, and we are more than happy to include that as part of our final plan.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate that. I mean, we figure out exactly what we're approving, I guess, but the, I'm satisfied that, you know, the city wants to require it, and you are okay with it.
Yes.
One more thing. I first heard about this project about three years ago when it was, you know, published that NFL Networks was leaving that building. And when that happened around that time, the city's housing element was approved, and this was zoned MU2, which was a lower zoning designation. A year later, it was, in the general plan, it was proposed to be upzoned to MUMD, which provides the density that we're seeing here today. And just after, I guess, just after it was revealed that NFL Networks was giving notice of early termination to their tenancy, and just after the city council approved a lower density, Hudson Pacific Properties and its lobbyists both donated money to a city council candidate who's now a sitting city council member. And I guess I'm curious how you see that interacting with your efforts to get this project built.
Commissioner, I'm not aware of the donations or the history you're speaking about.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you. So like, I guess, summary comments. I really like this project. I think we desperately need housing, and especially affordable housing. And it's clear that the only way we'll start to meet that need is by aggressively pursuing both publicly funded affordable housing projects and projects like these. And the city, thanks to the efforts of staff, is aggressively pursuing both, and we're starting to see the results with projects like these. We're also living in a time where people are losing trust in public institutions, and I think for good reason, because these are scary times. And that kind of corporate money in our local elections is corrosive to public trust, and I don't think we should sit up here and pretend that that's not part of the history of this project. I'd said I also don't think it's a good enough reason to reject this project, and it's not a, like, legal reason to reject this project. You know, hundreds of families, including 79 families who couldn't afford to live in Culver City, are now going to live right across the street from, in my opinion, the best elementary school in Culver City, and that's huge. So I support this project. I think some of the things that I mentioned sound like, I hope that they can be taken care of with the Public Works process, especially with the involvement of Safe Roots to Schools, if that indeed happens. I'm interested in proposing that caveat to the construction hours that, you know, public commenter raised. I think that was a good one, if there's support from other, from other commissioners. And that's it, yeah. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah.
On page, on attachment one of the resolution, Exhibit A, Condition Number 47 states, unless approved through approval of the construction management plan during construction, pedestrian access along the project's frontage shall be maintained at all times.
Great. Perfect. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Jones. Any questions or comments, Commissioner? Vice Chair Carter?
Nothing at this time. Or, you know what? Yeah. I also share concern about that intersection and children coming in and out. And I also share concern that there are palm trees, because they're flammable and they don't provide shade. But further in the details, it looks like there is more of a landscape plan, so I wasn't going to harp on it too much. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a few questions and comments to make. First question, just generally, you mentioned the $1.5 million mobility fees, and you mentioned the fees to the school district. Do you have a number on that handy? If you don't, it's okay.
You know what? I have all the other numbers for you. I could tell you that there are $3 million in Parkland fees that we're paying, $70,000 in affordable housing fees, $1.5 million for art, but I don't have the Quimby fees. There's a, frankly, statutory number that I just don't have for you.
That's all right, fine. I almost had the sense that you didn't have that number written down, but I wasn't sure.
Just want to make me look at, I know. Thank you.
And you already answered how high the building was. Just one question. I noticed that the mosque is not here tonight. Have you had any discussions with the mosque?
Yeah, really appreciate that. So we really are glad that the mosque is our neighbor. We have had very specific discussions with them. Chris and Eric had coffee with them the other day. They are very supportive. A number of the members of the church of, sorry, the mosque, rather, have showed up to our community meetings. We've had very nice discussions with them. I think that they're looking forward to having the ability to have more housing in close proximity to them so that their members can potentially live in our community as well, and we're glad that they're our neighbors.
Right. I do want to say that, I want to add my voice to those here who think that the Charles Avenue access to the Paseo really should be open. You know, we're building a lot of density in this city now. We have approved hundreds of units in the last couple of years, including hundreds of affordable units. And we will not succeed as a city if we treat these as fortresses that we try to wall our neighborhoods off from. We will only succeed if we embrace these buildings and we have neighborhoods where people want to walk to them. And I appreciate the amenities on this long paseo that goes through. I strongly suspect that while the neighbors are accustomed to the wall now, they will be regretting not being able to hop over to these Starbucks, whatever it is that they walk past every Sunday morning, and I think that that's going to be the consolation prize for them that they're really going to enjoy. So I just want to make sure, I don't know if there's a majority or just really require it to be open. I think that may invite, invite an appeal that is unnecessary, but I do want to make sure there's nothing we're approving here that would prevent the owner from deciding at a later date to open that gate for some or all of the time.
Appreciate it. I just wanted to clarify, because I may have misspoke earlier. There's a gate on Milton, and there's a wall on Charles, as of right now.
A wall on Charles?
Correct.
Well, that is a little different.
And speaking from the, from staff's perspective, the project approved tonight does include, you know, a closed gate. Opening the gate would require a modification of the project, which I believe would happen at the staff level. I think it'd be a minor modification.
But the wall would not be?
I think what you're saying is, if we wanted to come back at a later date, or we could ask for, at staff level, for minor modification to allow the wall to be opened and the gate to be opened.
Is indeed that what you're saying?
I cannot speak to the wall in general. I think the gate itself would be a minor modification, and we'd have to look at whether removal of the wall.
Mark Munzer, Planning and Development Director. Minor modifications on site plans such as this are fairly common, particularly as projects evolve and move into construction and also open up. So, but the details of that is, how do we determine if it's minor, meaning staff approval, would come when we got a proposal in for a gate in the future, if that were to happen?
I see. But any requirement from the commission at this point requires to come back, right?
To, I'm sorry, to, at this point in time, to...
If there was, if there was a majority here that simply wanted not to have a wall on Charles, or wanted to have a gate on Charles, is that something that we would be able to do sitting here and still approve the project today? Or...
If the applicant agreed to it, yes, if they wanted to modify the project.
Well, let me ask the applicant then, if they're, and I'm going to phrase it this way. If we said as a commission that we are open to having this as a gate or a wall at your discretion, is that something that, is that something staff could approve and that we could move forward with?
I'm sorry, we were discussing, what was the question?
Whether we could leave it in the hands of the applicant to decide after this point whether it would be a gate or a wall, and that would...
Chair, I think that, if I may say, that it sounds as if that's a possibility in the future, and as we've responded, it appears that it would likely be a minor modification, so a staff approval. As Jose pointed out there, while you may not have heard that this evening, initial community meetings was very strongly opposed, and as you noted, the project, you know, does have another path if folks were not happy with that decision tonight. So I, that's, you know, my thoughts on it.
Well, I suppose I'm going to ask commissioners their thoughts on that.
Can I just add briefly? What I would say is, we've given our word to the community that we would not have a gate there. If over time, and, you know, things change once projects have started, or they're under construction, or all of a sudden someone sees something 10 steps away from them, that all of a sudden, like you said, Commissioner Menthe, that they're now going to watch 10 minutes around to get to, we would be open to that conversation, and we'd come back and work with staff to make that change.
Although, this feels like a mistake to me. It really does. It feels like this is a mistake that we're going to regret. Even though I understand that the initial reaction of the community is to not want, to want that wall up there. Other commissioners have thoughts?
Yes, I think what we're discussing is something nobody's actually proposing, at least not on the applicant or on the neighborhood side, which is the introduction of these gates, right? It's coming from us. I'm not sure if we should impose it necessarily if no one's asking for it, even if we think it's in the best interest of the community.
Chair Menthe, there is one required gate at Milton by the fire department, so that is a requirement because of life safety, fire life safety.
Any other thoughts?
I agree that it's a huge mistake, but I'm, I kind of feel the same way that Commissioner Van Gillen does. I don't think, I wouldn't say that it's not, I mean, the original idea was to have it open.
It was originally designed that way, correct.
They want to respect the community's wishes. I, maybe I would say I'm persuadable, but I think that my approach would be, you know, don't require one way or the other. And if, if it can be, if it's a modification that staff can do, then I think that's all right.
Well, I'm not going to request a motion then to make any changes based on this discussion, unless someone wishes to make one. Other than that, I'm just going to sort of conclude by saying I'm just glad to see projects like this taking place. You know, our school district has had declining enrollment. I'm guessing you've got 500 units there, a couple hundred of them are two-bedroom units. You're going to see 30 or 40 kids going to that school across the street, and the ability to go to school across the street is going to be a major draw for them. And of course, we're going to see that happen all over this city. I'm also pleased, you know, I disagree with Commissioner Jones on this. I think it's very clear that public financing cannot possibly provide the number of units that we need for affordable housing in this city. It's way too expensive, and this is how we're going to get the units approved. We're approving, you know, if this approves, probably that's 79 units at no cost, at least no direct financial cost to the taxpayer. So I'm pleased to see that, because we do need to see that happen. With that being said, we are ready, if somebody would like to make a motion, which motion would be is...
Chair, the first motion would be to close the public hearing.
There we go. Thank you. You see, that's why we have a city attorney. I'd like to take a motion to close the public hearing, please.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Moved by Chair Menthe, second by Commissioner Van Gillen. Please vote. Thank you. Motion passes with five ayes.
Chair, if the commission is inclined to adopt staff's recommendation, I would remind the commission that that includes the modified conditions of approval that were discussed tonight.
So, thank you. We would have a motion that would be to approve CEQA Guidelines, Section 15168(c) clearance checklist that determines the project's specific potential environmental impacts or within the scope of potential environmental impacts analyzed in the Certified Programmatic Environmental Impact Report for the Culver City General Plan 2045 and Zone and Code Update, and thus determine no further environmental analysis is required, and that the project is exempt from CEQA and is an infill housing development project pursuant to Public Resources Code, Section 21080.66, and also adopting a project mitigation monitoring program that addresses the specific project impacts, and approving the site plan review request and extended construction hours request for the project, P 2024-0227-SPR, subject to the conditions of approval as stated in the resolution. Someone going to make that motion?
Who moved?
Some moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, let's call the question.
Moved by Commissioner Van Gillen, second by Commissioner Black. Please vote. Thank you. Motion passes with five ayes.
All right. Thank you very much. We can now get set for public hearing two. Which is 100 corporate points. Well, I believe Commissioner Van Gillen has an announcement to make at this point. Well, I believe, Commissioner Van Gillen has an announcement to make at this point.
Yes, concerning 1,000 corporate points, it is within proximity of my home. As such, I will recuse myself at this time.
We're sorry to see you go. Are we ready for a staff report yet? Okay. And it was, it's a big reset between public hearings, so I want to make sure we're, we're ready and. We'll wait until the commissioner.
Leaves the building, as it were.
You may proceed.
Good evening, planning commissioners.
Can you hear me?
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name's Pierre Chaco, senior planner with the Culver City Planning Department and the project manager for this second item on the public hearing agenda. This project is seeking site plan review and extended construction hours for the project proposed at 100 corporate point. The proposed project is a five to seven-story mixed-use development with 351 units and 6,825 square feet of commercial. The project includes 30 low-income units and is proposing a maximum height of 78 feet. And the project is proposed on a 4.49 acre site that has an existing three-story office building that's proposed for demolition. The project has been approved for density and other bonus incentives administratively approved per code and state density bonus law. As you can see on the chart, because the project is proposing 30 units of, of low-income units, it's eligible for a 20% density bonus of 59 units over the base density of 292 units that's allowed under the existing zoning. So the total number of units comes to 351. Additionally, through the DOBE or Density and Other Bonus Incentives Program per state density bonus law, it's also eligible for a height concession. It's seeking 22 feet of height concession and increase from 56 feet to 78 feet. As you can see from the location map, north of the site, across from Slauson, there are three-story office buildings. To the west of the site, five-story office buildings, both of which are located in mixed-use medium-density zoning. To the, to the, to the east and southeast of the site, there are residential uses, two to three stories in height, across from Buckingham Parkway, also, and they are located in low-density multifamily or RLD zoning. South of the site is an existing city parquet, the Fox Hills Parquet. I'm going to cover the content in the, in the next few slides using the site plan for reference, just so that it's more understandable. As you can see from the site plan, the project proposes a central multi-story parking structure that's completely wrapped by residential units, so the parking structure is actually not visible from the street. You see that the parking structure is accessible from a private driveway that connects Slauson Avenue and Buckingham Parkway. And the site plan is laid out in a format whereby there's continual frontage of buildings along both Buckingham Parkway and Slauson. The frontage along Buckingham Parkway is punctuated by a series of open spaces that would be visible from the sidewalk and also accessible to residents from the sidewalk. Additionally, the ground floor units along Buckingham Parkway and Slauson Avenue have ground floor patios that would also be accessible from the sidewalk, as would shared staircases as well as access points to the common corridor spaces, so that there are ways in which the sidewalk could be activated through use by the residents. It's also worth pointing out that there is a pedestrian pathway that's been included along the private driveway connecting Buckingham Parkway to Slauson that also adds to the pedestrian circulation. There are, part of the open space plan also includes a publicly accessible plaza that's right, located right at the intersection of Buckingham Parkway and Hanham Avenue, that's also fronted by the proposed retail space. There are additionally, and I'll see if my pointer works here, I'm not sure it works very well. I don't think the pointer works very well, but there are terrace-level open spaces located at the southwest corner near the intersection of Buckingham Parkway and Hanham Avenue, as well as around the middle portion at the westernmost, at the easternmost common open space at the higher level, there's also a open space at the terrace level. I'll skip this side other than to mention that the project is fully compliant with the mixed-use medium-density standards that apply to the site. A quick note regarding circulation and parking, the project does propose 524 parking spaces. And it, I'd like to note that although the city does not require any of this parking, the applicant is providing the parking, but these parking spaces would be subject to state unbundling requirements, which means that those parking spaces would not be specifically associated with any units. The project also provides EV parking per code as well as Cal Green and meets the bike parking requirements of the code. I've covered the points related to urban design, so I won't repeat them. This slide shows the elevations and views of the site. I'd point out on the elevation at the lower, at the bottom of the slide, that you can see that the project proposes to step down the height from seven stories on the, on the, at the corner of Buckingham Parkway and Slauson, down towards where Buckingham Parkway meets Hanham Avenue, from seven to five stories. The project requires site plan review. As I mentioned before, the project potentially meets the requirements of the mixed-use medium-density zoning. And I'd also note that the city is limited in its discretion and can disapprove of, disapprove the project or impose conditions that would render the project unaffordable unless it's based on a written finding of specific adverse impact on public health and safety, and the burden of proof for this lies with the city. The project is also seeking extended hours of construction. It's seeking an additional hour to start early at 7:00 AM instead of 8:00 AM on Monday through Friday, and starting at 8:00 AM instead of 9:00 AM on Saturdays. And the project is estimating, is estimated to take two months less construction time as a result of this request if approved. The extended hours of construction would be subject to various conditions of approval, including the construction management plan provisions. There were two public, there were two community meetings held, hybrid meetings, with a total of 25 attendees, both virtual as well as in person, and the project met the requirements for public notice for owners and occupants within 500 feet. This project is eligible for Class 32 infill categorical exemption based on the criteria that are listed on the slide. And with that, the motion. I will refer to the specific number, I'll need to check my notes on it, but it actually, it does meet the requirement based on. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Give me a minute while I check the notes.
Thank you.
Is there a different kind of question for somebody else this one wants to make?
I, I have a question, but I'll wait, I'll wait. Yeah.
I would guess that the EV parking is probably covered in the applicant's presentation, so if you don't mind waiting?
Sure.
Sure.
So my, my question is about the staff report, widen the sidewalk along Buckingham Parkway, frontage along with a five-foot right-of-way dedication. Is the, is the five-foot the sidewalk extension? Or is it a widened sidewalk and then five feet? How does that work?
I believe the, the dedication of five feet is being used for a widened sidewalk.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Well, with that, let's take a motion to open the public hearing.
Thank you. Who moved?
Commissioner Jones.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Black. Please vote. Thank you. Motion passes with four ayes.
All right. Thank you. So, public hearing is open, and we have the applicant here? Yes.
Good evening, good evening, again, commissioners.
Spencer Callick on behalf of the applicant. The good news is we get to talk about more housing, and I'm excited about that. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Slauson Investors LLC, and I know I've already thanked them, but I would remiss if I did not thank staff again for their help on this project. This has been another labor of love, in particular, I think, Pierre, this may have been your, this may be your first project, Vic Housing Project, since you joined the city, and really appreciate all of your help, and Emily and Mark, of course, as well. So, the developer of this project is Alliance Residential. For those of you who aren't familiar with Alliance, Alliance is one of the most experienced residential real estate developers in the United States with more than 40 years of industry experience, and the team has extensive experience in the greater LA area, including the four prominent projects you see here on the screen, some of which you may drive by often. I seem to drive by the VINS on Fairfax all the time. I don't know if folks have driven by that, such a distinctive design, the Hezbi, the Sway inside of Monica and Inkwell. And I think what this is representative is similar projects to what you have before you this evening, but also really responding to the surrounding community as well. So in addition to Alliance, the project is lucky to benefit from the design expertise of KFA Architecture. You'll hear from Gina as well in a minute, our favorite local Culver City heat and track architect, and MGS is our experienced landscape firm as well. So Pierre did a great job of going over this earlier, so I'll be brief, but it's located 100 corporate point walk at the southwest corner of Slauson and Buckingham, about four and a, four and a half acres, and is currently developed with a very aging office building and parking garage. I don't know if any of you have had the opportunity to go there. We had two community member, meetings there. It's, it's really a vacant office building where there's really not a lot going on. This is some of the beautiful pictures, and I'm being somewhat sarcastic of the existing building. Apologies to my client who owns this building, but it's not the prettiest thing you've ever seen in the world, and its current state really has no community-serving amenities and really does not engage with the surrounding community. It's also, let's be honest, developed with a very traffic-intensive use. We talked earlier about land use and zoning. As this commission knows, the city's gone through a very comprehensive general plan update, land use element update. What's really interesting about this project, when I first got a call about it, is even before the general plan update and before the zoning code update, this project that was before you today would have been zoning code compliant. It was actually one of the one parcels in the Fox Hills area that was zoned for 65 dwelling units per acre. And so when the general plan update and land use element update were completed, it was essentially, you know, renamed, but had the exact same allowance for a residential mixed-use project on the site. Now I will turn it over to Gina from KFA to provide some additional details on the architecture.
Hi again. Gina Welch with KFA Architecture. So the view that we're looking at now is from the southwest corner of the site. This is the retail entry plaza that you're seeing here. The street-facing facades are expressed with an articulated skin that is distinct from the simplified treatment of the interior courtyard elevations that you see. The folding of this facade and the placement of the courtyards along Buckingham and Slauson create breaks that reduce the perceived length of these streets, the frontage of these streets, and they add visual interest at these elevations. I keep forgetting I have the clicker. By the numbers, I won't go over them all again, but 351 residential units, 6,000 square feet of neighborhood-serving commercial space. And Pierre, you did a wonderful job of describing the site plan. Almost all the notes that I had to describe the design on the site plan were very similar, so I won't repeat a lot of them. But one of the fundamental goals of this project is a high collaboration of architecture and landscape design, so you'll see that. The shape of the site did create the opportunity to have these three private courtyards between the, the fingers of units that we call the fingers of units sticking out from the center, which is a great opportunity. There will be two rooftop decks that Pierre mentioned. There's landscaping all along Buckingham and Slauson, and a public park at the intersection of Hanham and Buckingham. All in all, the project will have more than 45,000 square feet of open space with 6,000 open to the public. And the landscaping throughout will feature a diverse mix of native and drought-tolerant species. So speaking on the pedestrian experience, immediately adjacent to the commercial space is this, what you're looking at here, is a beautifully landscaped public plaza and pocket park. This provides a connection with the existing Fox Hills Parquet right across the street, which I think will create a really, a nice moment of synergy in the neighborhood. There is an additional, there are units along the ground floor that have patios, they have stoops. It'll have direct access to the street and really enhance the concept of a walkable street. And the project does preserve, plans to preserve all the existing street trees along Slauson and Buckingham, and as we mentioned, the developer will be repairing and widening the sidewalk along Buckingham and increasing the size of the existing street tree wells. There will be approximately 70 new trees planted on the site, which will result in an increase of about 30 trees on the site total. So all these features together, I think, will really enhance the, connecting the architecture and the landscape will enhance the residents and the community both. Back to you, Spencer.
We're going to take the show on the road at some point. So, I want to talk a little bit about community engagement. That's something that was not only required by the city, but something that we tried to go a little bit above and beyond with. We did hold two required meetings, but we also hold, held one-on-one meetings with certain stakeholders of the community, and frankly, just folks who say, hey, I want to keep chatting about this, can we, can we chat some more? And as a result of that, we had, there's some pictures of our community meetings, people looking very interested in our design. We also had a dedicated website where folks could provide feedback. But I think it's, it's one thing to listen to feedback, it's another thing to actually take it into consideration as part of your project. And so, I want to talk a bit about what we heard. One of the things we heard was about keeping the street trees. We heard from a lot, from a lot of the residents who live kind of up on the hill, above the property, who said, we love those trees, don't touch those trees, those trees are amazing. Our client, and Jonas in particular, loves trees, loves lush landscaping. You'll see that as part of our project. And so, at one point, we'd actually gotten a comment from the city saying, get rid of the trees. Then we said, whoa, 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 we really don't want to do that, and the community doesn't want to do that, so can we leave him as is? And we agree, and that's why you see the dedication, Mr. Jones, about the, the wider sidewalk. One of the things we heard about was incorporating public space. Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Menthe, I know you were on the commission when you all approved the 5,600 Hanham project just across the street with that great pedestrian plaza and retail node, a commercial node there. We're really trying to mimic that and augment that across the street here with this project. And then we have the connectivity to the park, and what I understand might turn into a bit of a dog park in the future as well. It really creates a vibrant core within the surrounding Fox Hills community. We will, we've heard a lot about parking, which I'm sure we'll talk about as well, which is a great chance for me to talk to you about EV parking, Commissioner Carter, and to give you the exact numbers on EV you the exact numbers on EV parking. We will have 53 EV chargers that are, you can literally, I have an EV car, you can like plug it into your car, and then 208 that are EV-ready, essentially the conduit runs there, and that could be converted into those plug-in ones if they desire to do that. So we heard about parking, and you know, the discussion in Fox Hills is really interesting in terms of parking, where we hear, hey, we want to have a lot, a lot of parking. It's a little bit different than what we hear from some commissioners and some city council members, and so there's a balance there. And so what we've just, you know, we've looked at this closely, and we feel comfortable that we have the right amount of parking for this project as well. And then pedestrian linkages. You can kind of see that on the page here. We're glad that we have this pedestrian linkage through the ingress and egress to the property, and also the pedestrian linkage to the park across the street, and hopefully the new projects that are coming along in Fox Hills. So again, this evening, we are requesting three approvals, site plan review to approve the large, density bonus approval, and the extended hours of construction permit as well. And we'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you so much.
Do we have any clarifying questions from members of the commission for the applicant before we go to public comment? Yes?
I have a clarifying statement.
Oh, fantastic.
Just to remind everyone, the density bonus has already been approved. That is a staff level, a director approval, and so that's already been approved. So just the two.
Apologies, I used the old way of doing things, I forgot. You're right, we did get a letter with Mark's signature approving the density bonus.
Thank you, thank you for the clarification. Any clarifying questions from commissioners? All right, so let's go to public comment. Thank you.
Chair, we have seven members of the public register to speak.
All right, well, three minutes each, thank you.
All right. Our first five are Edward Walkovitz, Jeff Haas, Cindy Aragon, Leslie Sealy, and Judy Sherman. Our first speaker is Edward Walkovitz.
Good evening again, commissioners. I'm here as the interim CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, and it would appear that housing is this evening's topic du jour, which is not altogether a bad thing, given the state of affairs in Culver City these days. Once again, the Chamber of Commerce has overwhelmingly sent me to tell you that it endorses this project. The project represents a refreshing diversification of the somewhat monolithic uses in the northeastern corner of Corporate Point. It wouldn't be nice to get housing in as a mix with the office that's there now. I think the project is attractive, and is something that we believe the commission should favorably consider. And I would point out also that a number of the members of the Board of the Chamber of Commerce are also residents of Culver City, and they are in full support of this project. So thank you very much, it's a pleasure being before you again.
Our next speaker is Jeff Haas.
Thank you very much. I'm really looking forward to an upgrade to Fox Hills. I've been working there for 27 years in Fox Hills, and I think it needs a refresher. I'm looking forward to having more retail in Fox Hills. I think it'll also help businesses that work in Fox Hills. So I'm really looking forward to it and beautifying the area and bringing it up to current standards. It hasn't changed at all since I've really been there for 27 years, so I'm looking forward to it, encouraging to get more people in the area to help businesses there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cindy Aragon.
Good evening. I've worked in Fox Hills for almost 30 years, and I walk regularly twice a week, four miles around Fox Hills. And I think the area is dated, and updating it would be a nice, refreshing look, and I think it would welcome other residents who live there to come out and walk and enjoy how beautiful it's going to be in this area. I like the parquetts that are interspersed among the development, and I think it would invite more people to exercise more and to come out and walk. I think other areas that have been developed, like Playa Vista and the Hughes area, although initially I thought there might be too much development, it seems, as I drive through there in the evening to go home, and I drive through Hughes on the way into work in Fox Hills, I don't run into traffic or congestion, and I like the fact that there's access to the freeways on both sides of Fox Hills. So it seems to me that traffic would be well-managed, and I think the development would be an improvement. And of course, housing is so necessary for the people that I know whose children are growing and have no place to live other than to drive miles and miles away from Culver City. More housing would be helpful there as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Leslie Sealy.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm here.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, I want to address the planning commission. And I live in Fox Hills, I live on Canterbury, and I've been here for approximately 10 years. I don't agree that we need more and upgrades here. We are already too packed and dense in this community. The traffic is bad, whether it's on Canterbury, or whether it's on the surrounding feeder streets. People go very fast in this community, in this little hamlet that we have. So it's not really walkable, even now, with all the traffic that's coming in and out of this little hamlet that we have here. When you add more density, it's going to make it not walkable. And I don't agree with Cindy, and I don't agree with Jeff, that we don't need upgrading here, we don't need any more development here. So that is just my vote, or I would ask the commission to reconsider even adding more density to our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last three speakers are Judy Sherman, Andrew Relman, and Greg Weed. I will call now Judy Sherman.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. It will be no surprise to the Fox Hill community regarding approval of this project, since you have made it very clear that you are hell-bent on densing up Fox Hills to the max. By supporting the high-density designation of 100 units per acre, and I realize that this one is 65, even though the resulting of five proposals coming, we are at almost 3,000 more units that are going to be, that are being proposed in Fox Hills. So you are credited with normalizing inequitable distribution of the housing Culver City must build by overburdening Fox Hills instead of planning equitable distribution throughout the city. With this assault on the densest residential area in the city, we now have 2,600 units there, you're going against your city zoning code by not respecting the character of the neighborhood. You are just doing fine doing, and you are fine doing that. I know that you are not stupid, but you need to know, understand that our community is not either. Your so-called environmental concerns do not extend to Fox Hills, as we will see an immense increase in pollution with the amount of housing and vehicles that will result should this and the three projects be approved. Sounds like you've already decided to approve this project, but will you, but will do your deliberation act by asking questions and looking concerned. I am most happy to be wrong about my prediction, should you finally choose to behave with integrity, decency, and fairness by not approving this project. I say all this in part because you approved the 5,700 Hanham project, even though it is totally out of character for the area and includes major mature tree removals down Buckingham Parkway. What happened to your concern about mature trees there? You may even refer to the specific Fox Hill plan as a way of justifying your decision, even though this plan is only being done by the city to try to pacify the community, when in reality, the city is creating a problem with density in Fox Hills instead of preventing it to begin with. The bottom line is by your actions, you have shown you do not care about the Fox Hill community, and sadly, you have plenty of company, since all levels in city government do not care about us either. Again, I will be happy if you make my predictions wrong. Thank you.
There's Andrew Relman.
I'm just happy to see good design in housing. I think that the street frontage is very interesting and really refreshing. The articulation and the access from the sidewalk will really improve that walkability there. I used to work also in Corporate Point, and lots of friends of mine and friends of my kids are in Fox Hills, and lots of time at the park in Fox Hills. And adding a project like this really softens the kind of Slosson edge for Fox Hills as well, and I think that the retail really will start to add more community and the connection to the pocket park, and everything is great, so I think it's great.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Greg Weed. We do not have him either virtual or in person. And that is, that was the end of our speakers.
All right, well, thank you for that. So I will start by asking commissioners, if they have questions and comments, or staff and any others. So Commissioner Black. Commissioner Jones.
I have one question for the applicant, and I, this isn't really clarifying, so I didn't ask it earlier, but do you have any other information on the, that pedestrian pathway that goes along the driveway?
I do, and maybe we can pull it up just briefly. Sorry, on the slides. There we go. Was there a specific question, or do you want me to chat about it?
Yeah, what's it like?
So, this is actually something, I appreciate you bringing this up, because this is something that we heard from a number of our meetings, and something that we've incorporated as part of our project. Candidly, there's actually not a lot of people who are walking down Slosson, in my experience, because depending on the time of the day, it's like a, it's like the 4:05 there, it can be pretty fast. But we did want to provide the ability for there to be access. There's an existing fire lane there now, and what we've done, as you can see, let's see how good my pointer is here, maybe, it's working earlier. Well, it's, is it working? There we go, okay. So this is Buckingham down here, there'll be pedestrian access here, and then it crosses over to the other side, up to Slosson.
Okay. And are you concerned about cars zooming through there?
Concerned about cars moving through there?
Like zooming through there, like I want to get to the other side and I just cut through.
Yes and no, I mean, I guess what I would say is, most people don't know that that's location. I'm actually frankly more concerned about cars zooming down Buckingham, especially with that protected bike lane there, but I'm less concerned, because it's more of a private drive, most people frankly I don't think are going to cut through there. And there's a, as you, I think you know, there's a signal there as well, would slow people down.
Yeah, I mean, I like it, I'm just, I was just thinking about like, I'm pedestrian, I, let's say I live at the top, and I want to go down, I come out onto Slosson and I walk down, because I, forget where we saw this, maybe, I guess it was in the Fox Hill specific plan. I think that that intersection is one of the ones that was imagined as being real cool, I don't know, having cool stuff to go to. So like, it'd be nice, I like it for that reason, because not just, not just the people that are living up there, but you know, other people that are living in other developments that might be on Slosson in the future can come down through that pedestrian path.
Yeah, so I think you're talking about maybe the safer Fox Hills plan, or you're talking about the new specific plan that's under direct development?
In this specific plan, there was like an idea
Yes.
At some point, like, oh, this could be like the downtown of Fox Hills or something.
So I think you're talking about this specific plan that our friend Troy Evangelis is working on. Troy and I have had hours and hours and hours of discussion, we'll continue to have discussions about what's going on in Fox Hills. And I think the pedestrian experience is very important. It's something that candidly right now doesn't entirely exist. I mean, there certainly are places to walk, but it's not, there's not a lot of connective tissue, it's not well landscaped, it's not frankly, it's not master plan, which is part of the reason that the specific plan and safer Fox Hills are being developed. So it's something that we absolutely designed to, and we're thinking about, even though this project is technically not required to comply with it, we try our best to incorporate as much of that as we could.
Sorry, I was spacing out. Am I doing all my comments now to everything? I forgot how I started this.
What I was going to do is suggest to Mr. Calleck that he could also add any rebuttal if he wanted to make his, I forgot to give that opportunity. But after that, you can continue with comments and questions.
Okay, thanks.
I appreciate it, Chair. I think there's a couple of things that I wanted to chat about. One is about, and you know, we've heard, this commission has heard, I've heard, a lot about, oh, all the density is going in Fox Hills. I think this evening is a great example of that not being true. You just proved over 500 units and 79 units of affordable housing nowhere near Fox Hills. And so there is density, and there is building, and there is entitlements that are occurring all throughout our city, which is a good thing. The other thing I wanted to chat about is traffic. So as you all saw, the city prepared a traffic study as part of their categorical exemption, and this project, it's going to sound, it's going to sound odd, but this project actually decreases traffic compared to the existing office traffic today. So that's a net positive. You're not going to have all those people coming, going, you know, having to frankly leave for lunch, because there's nowhere in Fox Hills, you know, in this exact area to go grab a sandwich and come back. You're not going to have that anymore, you're going to have a beautiful mixed-use project there. The other thing I wanted to chat about was parking. We have looked at this very closely, and we feel very confident there's sufficient parking. Heard from a lot of neighbors that they don't want parking on the streets, we are not proposing parking in the streets, we're making sure there's more than sufficient parking on our site to accommodate the needs of the residents and the commercial space. And then, you know, the last thing I would say is that connectivity. As you can see, we have really mature landscaping, the frontage is property, it's something that our team has spent a lot of time looking at and thinking about, so that it's not something that, you know, takes a lot of time, you know, you see these projects where they plant like a tree that's about this tall, and then, you know, it takes 20 years to actually happen. We already have great lush landscaping, those trees are massive if you've walked or driven down there, which is a great start, and then adding in great landscaping as well, that I think will create a really great connection and interplay between the existing landscaping that's there and the pocket park across the street. And so we're excited about that.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did you have additional commentary, questions?
No questions, but just a couple of comments, just, I like this project, I think the design is incredibly clever, the like, the step down with the elevation change, I think is really cool, and then everything about the way it's laid out makes such good use of the site. It's exciting to see projects like this, that are so beautiful. I thought the same of the last one, too, I just had more to say, so I didn't, couldn't just wax about how beautiful it was. In that one, the passeo, turning the driveway into a passeo, I think was really clever. But here also, I like the, you know, one of the commentators mentioned Playa Vista. I think one of the things I don't like about that is the way it's kind of just like turned its back on and totally written off Jefferson, as if Jefferson can never be a cool street. Slosson is like a freeway now, but maybe it doesn't always have to be, and it's nice that there are some residences that open up onto there, you know, there's a future for Slosson, I think. And again, like the other connections that brings, can bring Slosson into the rest of Fox Hills, if you're on Slosson, as a pedestrian or cyclist or whatever. And wider sidewalk, the, all the trees, everything that you've done with that, I think is just really beautiful. And that's all.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Carter.
Yes, one question. Does this have much less setback than the other project?
Much less setback? That's a little, it's kind of comparing apples to oranges, so let me, let me try to parse, are you So, let me, let me try to parse that. Are you saying the building face from the sidewalk? Is that what you're saying? I actually think that there's a lot more of a setback, and I'm going to look at Gina. I think that's correct. Because part of what we want, we, let me go back to the site plan. Going the wrong way. What you'll see here is, we've actually, we're widening the sidewalk, and we are leaving the street trees there, as we talked about. We're also creating more lush landscaping and setbacks in some of those kind of stoop units we've talked about along the frontage. And then you see those kind of landscaped areas that are kind of jutting in as the property steps down the hill. It's actually, for those of you who haven't been there before, it's 21-foot difference between the top, sorry, 33 from the top to the bottom of the site. So, a lot of steep grade change. But yeah, overall, there is a, I believe, compared to the other project, there's a larger setback from the sidewalk.
All right. Just wanted to clarify. Thanks.
Okay. Well, I did want to ask you a couple of questions. First is, you're not going to keep calling it 100 Corporate Point, are you? No one's going to want to live there.
It's funny you ask that question, because I hear Jonas laughing the loudest behind me, because he's the one who's been saying to me, can we change the, can we change the word? We're working, we're working on that with, it's a fire department thing as well.
Okay. Well, I'm glad to hear that you're working on that.
Yes. We're going to call it Menthee Way. Is that all right? No, I'm joking. I'm joking.
Nobody could pronounce that. All right. Wanted to just ask, you mentioned the stoop units for half a second. Just wanted to ask you, how many of these ground-level entry units do we actually have? There's quite a few, right?
There are quite a few. It's something we're very excited about. They're at the, literally at the ground floor. If you're going to ask me to count, don't ask a lawyer to do math, but.
If Gina knows.
Approximately 30, if I'm counting correctly.
15 ground-level stoops?
15 ground-level stoops.
All right. No, thank you. I mean, there's, I'm so excited to see those, because that, I think I said about a while ago about the other project, about these buildings being fortresses. And when you're actually having people walk directly into their apartment on the ground level, this is, this is, it's, the overall message of the building is that this is a safe place to live and walk. I think that that's what happens when you have a building that looks like that. So, I'm happy to see that there.
It's something we're very excited about, and I think you all approved a project, the 5700 Hanum project that had those as well. They're going to lie in Buckingham. So, I think there's going to be nice connectivity. We're also seeing it in our 11-111 project that's moving forward on Jefferson. So, I think it's a great typology for the city.
I guess my sort of final comments, and you can actually sit down, so I'm done with questions. You know, would be, you know, it's important for us to remember that commercial units generally cause more traffic than residential ones. As a general rule, residences, we go in in the morning, we leave in the evening. Commercial property, people are coming in and out all day. Workspaces are much more crowded in general than housing. You know, offices are smaller. So, as a general rule, when you take what is an increasingly derelict corporate area and transform it into residential, you will actually end up reducing the daily, daily traffic. That's why, you know, it's our, that's why commercial properties are always on the big boulevards that are full of traffic, and houses are always on the small streets that never have any. So, my, sort of my final comment, I assume that Judy Sherman is still listening, and I just do want to say, you know, we do care about Fox Hills. I think everyone here does. I know staff does, certainly. And I strongly suspect that the applicant who spends a lot of money in Fox Hills also cares a lot about what that neighborhood is going to look like in the long term. I think there's a disagreement about what the future is going to look like. When I think of Fox Hills, I think if I were moving to Culver City now, that's where I'd move. It not only is going to be this livable city that everyone keeps talking about. We've designed these passeos through these buildings, and all the ground-level retail, it's actually mixed in with the residential. In a way, it isn't even in places like downtown Culver City, that of course, I live in and love. And yet, you also have the freeway right there, and the LAX right there. So, I think that's going to be very desirable. And I think over time, as this construction gets finished, you may be happy with what the result looks like. And if you're not, I understand. But with that, I'm prepared to take a motion to close the public hearing, and then we can move on.
Commissioner Jones.
Thank you.
Oh, we have a second from?
I, I second.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Jones, second by Vice Chair Carter. Thank you. Motion passes with four ayes.
Okay. So, what we were looking for is a motion. I'll read the motion, see if someone would like to make that motion. The motion is that to adopt Resolution Number 20, 2025-P10, P010, approving a categorical exemption pursuant to sequel guidelines, a site plan review, and extended construction hours for Project P2025-0064-SPR, subject to conditions of approval as stated in the resolution.
Moved by Commissioner Jones, second by Vice Chair Carter.
Any further discussion? No, let's take a vote.
Please vote. Thank you. Motion passes with four ayes.
Thank you very much. Thank you for both the staff, the applicant, for being here as the hours have gotten later. Let's see. We do not have any action items. Do we have any public comment items? Not on the agenda.
We do have Greg Weed also signed up for a public comment. Not on the agenda, but I do not, he didn't join.
Okay. All right. Well, then, I think we're done with that part. And so, do we have any items from members or staff?
I just wanted to mention that we will most likely cancel our next meeting, September 10th, but on September 24th, we will have a CUP for an auto repair facility at 10-200 Jefferson Boulevard.
Thank you very much. I guess my final comment is sort of welcome Commissioner Black joining us. Your first, sometimes our first meetings are short. Yours was not. All right. We have a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Moved by Vice Chair Carter, second by Commissioner Jones. Please vote. Thank you. Motion passes with four ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Meeting is adjourned at 9:14 PM.